We have two speaker cards tonight. Does anyone else want to speak during public comment?
Okay, we're going to call the regular council meeting to order. Vice Mayor, members of the council, town staff, members of the public, thank you so much for being here. It's always a pleasure to see you. Would you call the roll, please, Russell?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda, or should I say, third on the agenda, is public comment.
Sorry, we have two speakers tonight. The rules are in the agenda. Bob Hartman is Speaker One, followed by Bob Bush.
Bob Hartman, 54, 41, Southwest 198 hours. I rarely agree with Pembroke Pines, and I even less frequently agree with Angelo Castillo. But there was an interesting article in the paper today that Pines is adopting body cameras for their police officers. And, you know, I'm sure you all are aware of what's been going on in the news. And a lot of the situations out there are, it's highlighting some of the police brutality, but I think there's two sides to that point. Police officers get in situations all the time where people go after them with, you know, you see the news, there's crazy stuff that goes on, on both sides. And, you know, the benefit of the body cameras are, they don't lie, they don't take a side, they just show you what went on in the scenario. Now, I, in the same article that was in the Sentinel today, it also talked about how Davie is already either passed a resolution or they are pursuing. They just said that Davie's doing it as well. So, since we share the same police force, and personally, I don't know any of your opinions, but I think it's a good idea, I would recommend that you pursue it. Because, again, we hear all the time through our different homeowners' associations, all the things that go on out here, I'd really hate to see a major catastrophe with one of our law enforcement agents because one of the crazies on 27 pulls something, and like Detective Ryler, I think it was, they still haven't figured out who murdered him. So, again, to me, it's a win-win for both sides of, you know, the public and law enforcement. So, I would encourage you to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Second speaker is Bob Bush. Last speaker is Jim Lasky.
I have some interesting news. Keith has this whole show on YouTube. So, you still have to come to the meetings, but the rest of us don't. We can stay home and watch it on YouTube, and you can get the back issues. It's a little behind time. He was doing this, and I don't think anybody hardly knew it. And, but I'm trying to blab it up a little bit here, and let them know it's there. You know, it has, there's a very big advantage of watching it on YouTube. And that's called the fast-forward button. Just like you may wish you had-
Or go back unless you missed something.
Yeah, don't, don't you wish you had one right now? The, so, you can, you can get on there and watch all your brilliant sayings, and at late at night, or anything else. Don't do it really late at night, or when a little kid's around, because Keith's picture's on the thing. And, so, but anyway, the, it's pretty neat. You can go through the meeting pretty fast. You can skip if there's some item you don't, aren't interested in. But there's a lot of good discussion. And I'll tell you, it's, at home and relaxed and sitting there and watching it, you can listen better than you can here. But that, I just wanted you to all, all know that, in case you want to, you know, the next day or two. Usually, I think Keith said he'd get it in in a day or two. And, so, you can all watch whatever brilliant things you say. Thank you.
Yeah, Jim Lasky's last speaker.
Excuse me, but I'm very upset. I've been requesting the information on that truck and the EPA compliance standards. All right? If you're an OEM, it's different than if you're a complete car manufacturer like a Ford. You bought a chassis with outdated emissions. It's a problem. It was such a problem, they totally did the whole thing again. That's Cummins Engine Company, that makes the engine for Caterpillar, under the same name Axforce. I just can't believe you fell into that trap. It's not such a great deal. The maintenance cost that you guys said you were going to consider was never obviously considered because you didn't have the facts to even consider it. You could have gotten an appraisal from somebody that does that kind of work to give you a value of the chassis alone. And probably with a class-action suit that's looking to be certified in the state of Florida, okay, by, it's originated, I think, to lead Clayton's, a towing company, you can understand, to do a class-action suit's expensive. There has to be money in it for a lot of people. It don't happen by accident, and you're worried about saving money on maintenance. So, I'm really burnt. You know, I had, I gave you every fact on that truck and the recall, the legal information on the class-action suit, and nobody bothered to read. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. No more public comment.
Thank you, Keith. Item number four, board member comments. Any board members in attendance? Hello, Robert?
Bob Hartman, Chair of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board. There were two votes that the committee voted on last month pertaining to some of the improvements that are planned out here. I'm sure you all are aware that Broward County MPO put, what is it, 188th on their, what is it called? A long, LRTP. It's a government-
Long Range Transportation Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Representative. The prob, I guess, a little bit of the background is, we had requested, I guess, for some work out there, some road extension work. They took that to mean four lanes from Sheridan Street to Griffin Road. Not our intention. So, we are recommending that the council put a resolution together or work back channels to get this taken off the list. Back channels might be the better solution because if we, if you guys send a resolution that says nix this, Southwest Ranches did it. This apparently came up through the county. If you go back to the county and ask them to take it off, we don't have, our reputation isn't tarnished. It probably will get taken off, and we can do, or you all can do, what you think is best for the town. So, we recommend that that's taken off of the long, long-range transportation plan, right? Thank you. But the second thing we looked at this last month is the property being surplused out on 27. I believe that Newell had brought up a month or so ago to try to acquire the property on the northeast corner of Griffin and 27. Well, we wanted to take his good idea and leverage it a little further. Apparently, there is a substantial track on the south side, on the opposite side of this, of Griffin Road from the other piece of property, that we're recommending that the town also request through the surplus process, through our lobbyists, to try to get access to. The maintenance costs, if you see that property, are pretty low. It hasn't been mowed, clipped, cut, chopped down in probably 20 years. So, that would be something that we could, invest in is the wrong word because we'd be asking for and getting it for free, but it would be something the town could hang on to, you know, in perpetuity until some good idea came along. But if it goes off to some other interests outside of the town, who knows what we can have there? Newell and I were talking before the meeting about it. He's not on the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, so we can talk about that. And, you know, he was saying it's got a lot of serious easements on it that really reduce the size, but who knows what we could use it for in the future? Who knows whether those easements would ever be used? So, to me, it's an opportunity that the town shouldn't pass up on. I'm not suggesting a park, I'm not suggesting anything that you're going to have to sink money into because that property right now, like I said, is not maintained. It's essentially just vacant land full of all kinds of trees. So, our recommendation is the town pursue it through the lobbyists. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members wish to comment? Seeing none, item number four is concluded. Item number five, council member comments?
Steve? Thank you, Mayor. A few items. I wanted to touch on the, just a reminder that for those out on 205, I think, west, 205 and 210, 209, 208, those areas there, we're going to be starting up for the Tisdore effort. We're going to be having a couple of different meetings out there for, for the residents that live out there. Tisdore being the repaving of the roads. So, that's kicking off, and we'll be having meetings in late this month and then another one early in June. So, I wanted to bring that up. I wanted to give an update on the, I know out in country estates, we've talked about, and they passed a resolution, brought it here to the council as well, to look into possibly doing bike path out, out west. And it looks like there may be some opportunity to do that. At the last meeting, Marion, I think, a couple of other folks brought up the fact that there was a tiger grant with some, that was already being partnered in Weston. And, and so, we did, Andy did a little research on that and found it. And, and so, we're, we're looking to go ahead and tag along with that. We don't know for sure whether that'll work yet or not, but, and Jim, you mentioned tiger grants for, for many years in the past.
I do a lot of reading.
Yes, you do.
I'm very broke tonight.
And, so, so we are working on that. I just wanted to give an update. And then the last thing, just a quick comment about the body cameras. Just so happens, I was, had a conversation with Chief Lynn at Davie Police on that very topic about a month ago. And it was interesting because he had interesting perspective on both sides, the advantages and disadvantages to it. At the time, I don't know if they were looking at it, and maybe something's changed in the last 30 days, but at the time, there was no decision for them to go one way or the other. Maybe something changed since then. But I will say that, you know, it was an interesting conversation because he, he's definitely, let's put it this way, he's definitely looking at it, he's definitely trying to figure out what the best thing is to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Doug?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm going to be a couple of minutes here, so forgive me for being a little bit long-winded. A couple of things. On the Broadwing site out west, and the chief and the engineers and who else went and looked at those trailers or whatever, but when we, you have those papers, Andy, by chance, or no?
Two different things.
Okay. Anyhow, Andy's going to give you guys a form. But when you add in the architect's costs, the engineer costs, the bringing those up to code by recommendation, what the engineer says, you were in the, we budgeted, we thought, not to exceed $100,000. Their number comes in at about $180,000, which is way out of budget for what we were trying to do. Then my idea, or my thought came, we haven't done a volunteer project in town with town volunteers in a long time, almost since the original town hall. And I thought if we got the school trailers for free, we could get them moved, do all that, and we could do it with volunteers, and we could save us, I would say, at least half that money and come in under budget to do it at $100,000. But then I was speaking to Keith earlier today, and he said, why don't you just get a travel trailer and stick it out there? Well, he, he had a different idea than I had. He said, what he sent me was comical, like a pop tent trailer thing. And I'm like, no, that's not going to work. So, I went and dug up 36 or 39-foot, fifth-wheel-behind-a-truck kind of thing that has four or five slide-outs and a bathroom, and is really nice, and that kind of thing. And I sent it to him, and he said, I want one of those. So, anyhow, he thought that was pretty cool. But they were in the $35,000 to $60,000 range to buy them, used or new, depending on what you wanted. They come with a warranty. Some of the Roosts now have 10-year warranties. I've got a presentation that I sent over to Russell that he's going to put up on the screen to give you an idea of what I'm talking about. So, in bringing this up and talking about it to Keith, Keith said, if we did that, we wouldn't have to plat that property out there. It would save time, money, based on what we have to do. And we would put something like this out there for the firemen to use because there's only two guys like on duty. Can you blow that up, or is there any way to blow that up? Anyhow, so, the, the thought is, this, it's moving a little bit slow to get this, what we're trying to do, done. And I bring it up fairly regularly about moving it along. And it doesn't appear that it's cost-effective to do it the initial way we were talking. But if you bought any one of those, it comes with, you know, a couple of year warranty on some stuff. The Roost's a 10-year warranty, the chassis is like a three-to-five-year warranty. But there's different layouts, different types. And we can just pull it out there, park it, strap it down, hook up a septic tank to it, hook up a water hose to it, you have running water, you have bathrooms, and you're good to go. So, I guess what I'm bringing out to the council is, how soon do we want to do this? How much money do we want to light on fire or burn to see how this is going to work for us at that location? Because in a couple of years from now, we can evaluate it and see where we're at. But getting them out there on that site with a fire truck, the sooner, the better because that's going to increase those response times. So, I'm just bringing this up as a suggestion and an idea and a quicker way not to waste money and, and still move forward with it, and have some kind of warranty if you want to do it new. Or if you want to do a project and redo those classrooms. And I've talked to quite a few residents in town. A lot of people are on board with doing that as a community thing, volunteer. Andy's a little skeptic because he hasn't been around to see exactly how this town comes out for something like that. So, he's a little gun-shy, and I don't blame him. But the rest of us are confident and know what this town's capable of doing. So, I would say to the council, I'm looking for your input, what your thoughts are. I mean, if we were to buy something like that, Keith, I don't know if you want to jump in here at all.
Well, just to answer your question, the other way would have to be platted. If you're putting a permanent structure on the property, it would have to be platted. Andy may be able to answer, because I haven't been involved in this, but plating in the county takes anywhere between 12 and 18 months to plat the property. So, the reason this came up is Councilmember McKay called me and said, how could we move the fire, the volunteers out there immediately? And I think he said, now. And I said, the only way to do that is by putting a, what we call a temporary structure, meaning a movable structure, that you wouldn't have the permanency, and then you could do it tomorrow. So, I sent him like a tent structure, and he said, no, well, actually, there's a real structure like that that if there was a major problem and we needed to relocate them for some reason, you pop it on the back of a truck, you could drive it wherever you wanted and locate your fire department wherever you needed it to be. And so, I said, listen, it's an interesting idea, bring it up to the council, and hence, how it's here.
So, anyhow, so, I'm looking for you guys to pitch in, give some input, see what you'd like to do. But I think the sooner we get something going out there, the better. And I think in the meantime, if we want to move forward with plating any way we can so we're ready to do anything else we, we might want to do, but in the meantime, we need to operate out of there.
Thank you, Doug. Steve? Thank you, Mayor. If I can talk during your time a little bit. I think it's, I mean, it's, it's an interesting idea. I mean, to me, the whole thing is exactly what you're talking about. We need to get something out there quickly. And I was getting pretty frustrated as well. So, it's an interesting idea. I, you know, I think, we need to think about it a little bit. I mean, but, but I don't know if there's any, is a temporary structure? Is there any restriction on how long it can be out there?
Not even a temporary structure. It's a- What do you call it, Doug? It's a movable-
It's a travel trailer. It's a fifth wheel.
It's a movable, it's a fifth wheel.
It's a fifth-wheel travel trailer.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's not, it's not even deemed to be a structure. It's a vehicle.
Okay.
It's a trailer.
So, I mean, I think it's interesting to, I do think that it might make sense to continue with the, the plating and everything like that as well. But it's interesting. I don't, I, I think it's a-
It works.
Excellent.
Clearly, listen, we could, we could shop it, we could buy it brand-new with a warranty on everything. If you wanted to put a structure over it, like a lean-to, like a pole barn kind of thing, you're going to get a lot more use, a lot more time out of it. You know what I mean? So, you know, there's a variety of options we have on that. But I would tell you that for them to have a brand-new trailer, everything new in it or whatever, and it's warranted, you know, they take care of it. You know, it's not, it's not made with regular plywood. It's made with particle board and stuff, but it's light and it's movable. And if we had to move it for some reason, we could. Water, septic, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, it's, it's very doable and keeps us way within budget.
Freddie?
I don't want to rain on y'all's parade or nothing, but one thing you got to be careful of. We had, had problems with it here when we moved the trailers here. Those trailers, when we take them, they become commercial property. And commercial is completely different than residential. In other words, they probably got Romex, which you can't use in commercial. We had the problem when we bought the town hall here. We got those trailers and everything. And then when I started trying to find out what we could do for power, I had an electrician friend of mine, he lives, lives in our town, looked at them, and he said, Freddie, I can't touch them. They're commercial, now, commercial can't use Romex. He says, the only offset, and maybe you could do this with your building, what you can do, he says, I'll build you a structure, which he did. He built us a 400-volt unit outside, that he set outside the building. And he said, if you'll big me a trench all the way to each one of the buildings, I'll run conduit, and then I'm safe because I'm not doing anything inside of that building. I can do all my work outside of that building. So, that's one thing, we got to be careful when we start doing something like this, is what we can do with them and what we, because it's not residential anymore. When we take it over, it becomes commercial. So, there's something that we, we need to keep in mind.
I got you. I'm, listen, I hear what you're saying. But, but it's just moving forward, I'm saying, we still got to plat and do other things, and that would be in the future kind of thing. You know what I'm saying? But right now, this would give us the ability to take an action, get a vehicle that they can stay in and be at, and move the equipment to there so the response times improve a lot sooner.
There's no doubt in my mind. I don't know for sure, but I don't think there's anything stopping us from putting in a temporary service, hooking up whatever we want to, to work from there. The same thing if you go build a house.
Right.
You get temporary service, you set everything up, then you go from there. I think we, we can do that. I don't, I'm not saying, they changed those laws so much, but I haven't been involved with them lately. But the way it was before, we can just get temporary service, put it on, then we go get our permits and do what we have to do. But we got to start, you know? My, is it my turn now?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Actually, today was my day for MPO. It's always on the morning before our council meeting. One of the things that came up, and I know Jim's going to be happy to hear this, this year, they've increased the tiger grants for safe streets. There's even more than it was last year. So, you know, that, one of the things, they really go for grants, and they do it a lot, and it's something we've been talking about, is bike paths and stuff out there on, on Griffin all the way to US 27, which we were talking about. But, anyway, that's coming up. Also, Doug didn't do it, so I'll, I'll do it for him.
I was leaving it for you. Well, first, let me say, the MPO meeting you called that was had, so let me thank you for arranging for that meeting. Freddie called the meeting, the MPO. Brian Kaleka from Davie, who's the vice, vice mayor over there, but-
Well, actually, what happened at MPO is him and I both wanted to talk about parking ride. If I wanted to do it, nothing would have happened. But with two members wanting to do it, we were able to set up a meeting privately with FDOT on what could be done.
It was open to the public, and I happened to attend with them, and I was extremely passionate. So, go ahead.
More. He was extremely passionate, I'll tell you that right there. But, anyway, I, I think they got our message. We don't, they don't want parking ride. But the only problem is, all we got to talk to was the man from the FDOT and, of course, the man from MPO. It has to come back before the full group of 32 people, you know, when, when it does come back. In other words, it'll, we can arrange to have it to come back, and then we get a chance.
He said July, I think, didn't he? Brian mentioned July.
Oh, yeah.
There were a dozen people in this meeting. He acts like there's a handful. There was a dozen people, maybe 13 in that meeting.
Yeah. But I, I think we're heading in the right direction with, with what we're doing on it, and, and, but we, we don't want to drop it. We got to keep, we want to keep it because, let me tell you something. They told you at that meeting, you know, you people, it's going to happen. It's going to happen somewhere. So, it's now, he says, because that was their recommendation, where do you want it? You know, my recommendation, this Palm is the beautiful place for it. You know, right there. They, they got the space, and they got the money, they got everything. That would be my recommendation. On the Fishnall property, you know, Steve, I'm not going, I'm not going to give up on this. I've talked to Andy in December's here, right, December? And I may be wrong, but when we bought, when we got the grant for the Fishnall project, we put money into that grant. You remember December? We didn't have enough money because when Ben agreed to sell the property to John Canada and our town, it takes you a year to get that grant. So, when we first started talking to Ben, he wanted a million-two, I think it was. All right? By the time we got, working on the grant, he wanted a million-eight. Wasn't that the final price? I think it was a million-eight. Well, anyway, we got the big, they got, John was very good at working deals, let me tell you something. Anyway, he figured, well, we'll do this. How many trees you got on that thing, Ben? About 13,000. He said, we'll just buy your trees, and that would be the additional price on it. So, what I'm saying is, we've asked permission, Emily's not sure, didn't I? To go, we went to the people where we got the grant for that park and said, could we do anything there? And they said, no. But we didn't bring up the fact that we put a lot of person, town money into that park. So, I think there may be a part of that park that we could still use for something. And I've talked to Cleat about it. I think y'all, Emily's still working on it, isn't she, or you know for sure? But she had made one, she had made one phone call to the gentleman's name that handles that, I don't know. But I would like to pursue it a little bit further and see by the fact that we'd have to go back, and I imagine there should be some record that we put, the town put money into that park that we could possibly put a bill, put something on that, on the Fishnall park that legally. I don't know. It's a shot. It ain't worth, it ain't going to cost us nothing to try. But, you know, people are saying, I've heard a lot of people recommend they'd like to have that fire station more centrally located. That would give it 190, if it's pretty closer. It's not as far as there, but you're getting closer. So, I think it's something that I think we should follow and do, do it done. Andy, where are we at on the resolution that we were supposed to make? And it's supposed to go about opposing 188? Didn't we, weren't we supposed to go forward, we getting a resolution that's supposed to go?
Yeah, that, Bob Hartman spoke about, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Bob Hartman spoke about that before. The council had passed the 184 resolution. That has been sent off. I know that staff is working on the text of the resolution for 188. So, we'll be bringing that to you as soon as we have that ironed out.
Okay. All right, let's see, is that all? That's about all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. Gary?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. A couple of things, I'll be brief. One is that the, coming up here in two weeks on the 30th of May- One is that the, coming up here in two weeks, on the 30th of May, we, at Advisory Boards, having their annual scholarship food truck event, and it's a lot of fun, it's 48 at the Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park. Make sure everybody's there, will, most of us, or probably all of us will be there, coming and going, and it's a lot of fun, the kids, the kids are there, and everybody enjoys it, I believe there's gonna be a band, there's like 10, 11 food trucks, there's all kinds of baskets that are being raffled off, and things of that nature, it'll be, it'll be a good evening for everybody to go. The other thing, the travel trailer concept is pretty interesting. I would definitely support looking at some hard numbers and see what's involved, I mean, there's some site prep involved in Broadway, I don't know how the parking lot is, I mean, the key thing on the response out west is the vehicle. Everything else is just a parking place, you know, at this point. So, I think your idea, Doug, has a great deal of merit, and I think it's something we need to pursue, you know, right up to the point of purchase, you know, take a looking at it, take a look at it from all angles and all aspects, and if we do decide on another site somewhere else, the possibility exists, it's not that hard to move it. So, I think it's definitely worth pursuing and seeing where we go on that. And that's all I've got for it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Obviously, very unique suggestion and recommendation, but it's a couple of things, I was jotting some things down as you had suggested it, Doug. Obviously, we want to get feedback from the department to find out what their issues might be. I saw one bedroom, I'm sure there's some with two, I mean, I can think of sleeping arrangements, I can think of a meeting place, I know that potentially they could use the existing facility to do that. Site preparation, what's involved with that, because they're gonna need to, obviously, store the vehicle out there, that's not something that's very, very light, and I suspect that there's a lot involved with the site, not only site preparation, but the cost associated with that is, well, other equipment, storage, so those are some of the things that need to be evaluated and looked into. The other concern that I have also, while it's a temporary scenario, and we're talking about developing that site, we need to take a look very, very closely at what the estimated or projected costs are with regards to bringing that to fruition, between, you know, the site development, the acquisition of the trailer, and the engineering services. And Andy, you can touch on this during the administration comments, and if I'm wrong, tell me, 700,000 to a million dollars is what the estimates are. Then again, I could very well be wrong, but with regards to those figures and those numbers, I, that's a threshold or benchmark that makes me very, very hesitant, especially if we're gonna be mandated transition from a temporary to a permanent. So, there's a lot of questions with regards to, with regards to, with regards to that. But, and very unique, very interesting concept, and again, you know, we want to get the feedback from the department, there's a lot of things, obviously, but interesting, interesting thought. And again, the transition troubles me too, only because I take a look at some of the costs, it's excessive, it's gonna be excessive. And the other thing is, and I know that we're talking about providing better service out west, and concerned about response times and stuff, and I think we're on the same page with regards to that, but maybe something to contemplate also is to improve the existing facilities, you know, I know that they were talking about maybe renting a new modular, replacing ones that are there now. I mean, there's just a lot of things that are going through my mind as part of what's being contemplated with regards, not only this site, but with regards to the facilities. And we start getting into this, I think we have some estimated costs for new public safety building, and that's something we're gonna work really, really hard on in the, in the next year with regards to, you know, maybe a potential partner, maybe state, you know, potentially federal, but a combination of many partners, and I think the estimated cost for that is, you know, over $5 million potentially, of course, that doesn't include the site. So, there's a lot of things that are out there that are being contemplated, and recognize the efforts of this council to be very creative and very innovative, and coming up with some suggestions and ideas moving forward. But again, until we have a clear picture as to what those costs are gonna be, obviously, feedback from the department, the site preparation, what's gonna be out there, I mean, just the arrangements, obviously, to accommodate the staff, there's a lot of things in my mind in moving forward, but a lot of good thoughts and a lot of good ideas. With that being said, that concludes my comments, and that concludes item number five, which is council member comments. Item number six, leave comments. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor, and I will be brief. First and foremost, thank you all for the birthday wishes, I appreciate it. It's wonderful to finally be able to say that Gay Chapels is double my age. I've been told by many here tonight that the back nine is just as fun as the first nine, so I do thank everyone here. As it relates to legal matters, we finalized the draft complaints relating to the road barricades up on Southwest 54th Place. The attorneys for Wes Clark and Vardeman is the law firm of Shuts and Bowen, and they're gonna be joining in in our action against Pines. It went to them today, they're adding in some additional provisions, which they can plead dealing with eminent domain and versus condemnation, et cetera. They have sent it back to me, it will be ready to file to me no later than Monday, so that will be done, and it's also great to see that it's not just the town taking on the load on that case, it's also the residents and their own legal counsel as well. I thank Bob Bush for mentioning the fact that I've restarted to put the town's meetings on my website. It mainly came about because my wife doesn't believe that I'm actually here for as many hours as I tell her I'm here, so that's my proof to her. I hired a new company that increased the bandwidth and the server space capacity, so they've been able to upload as many as possible, and Russell has a deal now where he sends them the video the minute he gets it, so it's up almost instantaneously. So, I think the plug, I didn't even tell him it was on there, but he was stalking me and happened to find it. So, I appreciate that. In regards to the, I think it was Bob Hartman mentioned about the, taking the roadway off the long-term, long-range plan and having Broward County do that, as a reminder, we do have Mitch Caesar under contract to handle county issues. He actually called me today to see what we needed, this is a perfect need and something that can easily be accomplished, so with the council's directions, we will approach him, and as long as everyone's on board and tell him to work on that.
Do it.
Okay. So, that will be our direction for him as well. Other than that, I hope everyone has a wonderful Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
And happy birthday. That concludes item number six, legal comments. Item number seven, administration comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I have a few things this evening, but I'll start out by saying I've certainly heard the council comments on Broadway site. I recognize the concerns that you have as far as costs and making sure that we're certainly as cautious as we can be and not overspending out there. There's a lot of information that's, that really come in just within the last 48 hours that does give me some, some cause for concern as far as the overall expense, while I know we're anxious to move forward and get the project done, you know, I think from a staff standpoint, we're gonna take a look at it, we're gonna listen to the comments that we've heard from council tonight, we will revisit that and come back before you again with a little further information. Other than that, I have a few other announcements, and all pretty much good news, Mayor. First, I just want to point out that our, the town's building department, CAP Government Services, now has a presence here in Town Hall, so for those residents here who are looking to pull building permits, they no longer to go, need to go over to CAP's offices in Weston, they can come here to Town Hall, we have a representative here from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM every day. I am very pleased to announce an opening date for the Country Estates/Fishing Hall Park. We're gonna do that on a Saturday, October 27th at 10:00 AM, and we're working on the festivities for that, but I ask that you all put that on your calendar, and I'll be working with Bob, this October, no, I'm sorry, June 27th. October would give us a lot more time to plan. I don't know where that got, 'cause I'm looking at, I'm looking at 10:00 AM, that's where the October came from, so my apologies, but it'll be June 27th to 10:00 AM, okay? And I'll be working with Country Estates on that as well. I had tentatively tried to pick out a date for the town birthday party, I've heard from the council and from the residents, it's something people are very anxious to have. There's been a little discussion as to whether or not that's the best date, and what that may or may not be combined with, so at this point, I'll tell you, just stay tuned, we'll continue to work on selecting a date and having something for you, you know, very shortly, but certainly staff is aware of the desire of the council and the residents to move forward and celebrate the town's 15th birthday. There was mention of the South Florida Water Management Parcels, and I have an aerial here which I'll share with you, which just shows those two parcels on north and south of Griffin Road, out at US 27. I will tell you that we have gone on record with South Florida Water Management District with our interest in both parcels, we have not heard back from them yet, but obviously, depending on the response from them, we'll, we will adjust and tailor our response, but staff is continuing to pursue this. We have initiated contact with Comcast on some of the derelict poles, the utility poles that we have around town. FPNL has put in a lot of new poles, they have transferred their wires over, in some cases Comcast is running behind on that, so we are trying to work with Comcast to get that transition expedited and those extra poles removed. There was a mention of the Tiger Grant before, as you all know, based on a request that came from residents out west, the council directed me to send a letter to the county requesting that bike path be included on the north side of Griffin Road from Bonaventure Boulevard out to US 27. The county agreed with our request and forwarded that to the MPO. The MPO is in the process of applying for a Tiger Grant now. That bike path is included in the scope of work that they're looking for within that grant, and the mayor yesterday signed off on a letter of support for that. I've been able to secure letters of support from the city of Weston and from the town of Davie as well, that we've shared with the MPO, and I've asked our HOA presidents for support from them as well. So, we're hopeful that the MPO will receive that Tiger Grant, will be able to get the funding for that bike path at that point. And the only other thing is, I'll just touch on, was the meeting that we had at the MPO on the park-and-ride lot, there were easily a dozen people, probably 15, 16 people around the table, including the district secretary for FDOT, who came into the meeting with Vice Mayor Fisick Kelly, council member Bright Cruz, Vice Mayor Collective from Davie. Did they say Bright Cruz?
Yeah.
In October, I'm 0 for 2. My apologies, gentlemen. We had the meeting with the, with the district secretary, who came into the meeting and said that he was not prepared to kill that project, that it was up to him, that he acknowledged that there was no funding for it, but they were carrying that project forward, which is what's, what's been noted by all of you in the past, even though it hasn't been funded, they continue to carry that forward. So, he came into the meeting, he said he was not prepared to kill the, that, that project at that meeting, however, they're gonna make a presentation to the MPO in July, and should the MPO vote it down, at that point, it will officially be killed and removed from their plan. So, we'll keep an eye out for that, I know the vice mayor will be there at that meeting, and I know he'll certainly speak on behalf of the town and the town's interest. And that concludes my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, that concludes item number seven. Item number eight, resolution. Russell?
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the second modification to the agreement with Cleaning Systems Inc. for Town Hall janitorial services, approving an additional one-year term, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into the second modification to the agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Sandy, you want to just give us an explanation, or Andy, or?
Yeah, Mayor, I certainly started off, obviously you have more questions, Sandy's handled this contract, but this is the same company that we have currently servicing Town Hall, they're doing, you know, we're certainly an acceptable job, we're pleased with their performance, if we have an issue, we bring it to their attention, they resolve it, we're extending the existing contract at the existing prices, no substantive changes.
Which is $10,200 per year for the core services?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, any members of public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment, public comment is now over, again, we got a motion in a second to approve, any additional questions or comments, concerns, council? Seeing none, Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisick Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number nine.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the 2015 amendments to the three interlocal agreements with Broward County, providing for the division and distribution of the proceeds of the local option gas tax, the Broward County 5th Cent Local Option Gas Tax, and the additional local option gas tax, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute said agreements and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell, council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed, again, we have a motion in a second to approve, council, any additional question, comments, or concerns, it's pretty straightforward. Seeing none, call a question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisick Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 10.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Anzco Inc. to complete the trail improvements in the Country Estates Park, approving a fiscal year 2014-15 budgeted appropriation from the General Fund and Capital Projects Fund, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue, my question deals with the additional $10,000 that you're going to have to take from the general fund that wasn't budgeted. You have the grant plus the match, and then an additional $10,000 that's on there. My question is, is all, having seen no documentation as to what is actually going to be done in this project, is it all four sides that are going to be dug up and built into a trail? Are it the two sides that the, those that would be using the trail have said that are perfectly fine, and all they need is some dressing up and maybe some grading, which would be the north side of the park and the east side of the park? Is this grant for the south side and the west side of the park trails, or is this all four sides that are going to be dug up? Because if it is, maybe we could cut out $10,000 of it that we don't have to spend on the two sides that aren't. So, I'd like to hear some details from staff before we go forward, and then reopen public comment so we can adjust it and discuss it. Because I think that there's two sides, and if you'll remember, Kathy Cox was here from the Trail Riders Association, and said that the north side trail is fine, the south side trail, the only thing that needed to be done on that, and please don't do anything to it, was some dressing up for some potholes that were on it, and maybe a little bit of work down at the south end, and the only place that needed work was the south side and the west side. So, if that is what the, the grant is for, is those two sides, I don't understand what the additional $10,000 is for, because that's what it was. So, I'd like to hear staff explain exactly what is going to be done in that park, on that trail, and then reopen so we can have comment on it as to whether it is a good idea or a bad idea, or the plans suck.
Any other public comment?
He's exactly right, by the time somebody lose their head. Believe me, I've walked that trail at least four or five times, all right? Let's try it all together when it's wet, and I'll show you a horse ain't gonna fall down on that, and if he does, that's gotta be a freak of nature. That trail has got no problems.
Any other public comment? See no more public comment, public comment is now closed. Council, again, we have a motion in a second to approve, any additional questions or comments or concerns? And Steve, I, you know, there were some questions, obviously, and whether it's Clete or Andy that want to answer them, obviously, we want to get some clarification, I know that Clete's been working on this, but go ahead, Steve.
Frankly, Mayor, that's all I was gonna ask, was just to have some staff address exactly what the project entails.
Thank you, Steve. Clete? I know you've been working on this. I don't think your plan sucks, Clete, a lot of time and effort, and there is a lot of backup material to confirm what the project is and what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. The trail itself is a, called a multipurpose trail, it also has a nature trail that goes in between the wetland area and the area that's currently overgrown with native vegetation, among other things, ornamentals. It... It does go the eastern perimeter, the western perimeter, the southern perimeter of the park. The trails will be raised up, they will be demucked. There's, according to six soil borings we had, there were about, there's an average of two foot of muck throughout the trail system. That will all be removed and replaced with clean, acceptable fill overlaid with a fine grade material with seed and mulch. What else? It is part of the overall trail system plan, and the, that is just the next phase that we're addressing. The subsequent phases are the lake, the equestrian arena area, which is going to be surround, the trail will surround eventually on the southern end, and also the open space ball field, play fields, if you will, that are currently where the piles of material are just south of the play area, the play area and the bathrooms. But yeah, it's a good price. It's about $25,000 less than my estimated cost, and about $35,000 less than a drainage consultant's estimated cost, whom I asked to put some numbers together.
Thank you, Cleat. Any question, any more questions, Steve, or council member we have here? Okay. Thank you, Cleat.
You're welcome.
Okay. Counsel, again, we have a motion in a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Call a question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 11.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the settlement of the litigation styled City of Sunrise et al. versus Broward County, authorizing the town administrator to execute a settlement agreement with Broward County, authorizing the town administrator to execute a settlement proceeds distribution agreement with the settling municipalities.
Thank you, Russell.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve. Before I open it up for a public comment, Keith or Andy, just the status of where we are. I do have some specifics, but who would like to take this one? Andy?
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, this is the suit that was originally initiated by the city of Sunrise against Broward County over the Resource Recovery Board assets. We were one of 18 municipalities who participated in that. We were one of 26 municipalities who are part of the interlocal agreement with Broward County. The assets of the Resource Recovery Board were to be split among the member cities based upon their contributions in the solid waste in fiscal year 12. In fiscal year 12, we were .8851%, less than 1% of the waste total. So that would be our percentage share of the proceeds. The proceeds that are to be divided up now, there are $32 million in cash that the county is sitting on. Our percentage for that would be $283,232. There's another property that's currently valued at $6 million to be sold. If that property is sold for $6 million, our proportionate share would be $53,106, bringing our total that we would receive from this to $336,338. The nice thing, and the real good news I get to share with you, is as smaller percentage as we were of the total, that's the same proportionate share we pay to the legal fees on this, and so our return on investment, we currently got under $1,200 invested, and certainly a very good return for the town.
Very good. That's good news. Very good news.
Is that a challenge for our legal team?
I didn't.
We just rode Sunrise's coattails any time.
Okay. Again, we got a motion in a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, we got a motion in a second to approve. Andy, thank you for the explanation. Gary?
I have a comment, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Something I'd like this council to consider, we're about to get a windfall of over $300,000, and this is strictly conversation at this point, discussion. We have Tisdor Project coming up. It would be really nice if, I think, if, what, chosen year, maybe next year or the following year, where we apply this money to the Tisdor Project. I see it as a twofold benefit. One is, it is a tax decrease, because it would affect the millage, and the other thing is, the roads get paved. So I kind of see it as a two-prong win project for the town, and I just want to throw that out there for consideration when we get to that point, because it's too easy for this to get thrown into reserves, to be thrown into, you know, let's put it to work on something that will benefit our residents. I just want to throw that out there.
Good section. Good thought. I don't have any ideas of that. Absolutely. Absolutely. Andy, I don't know what your thoughts were or whatever, but I certainly like that idea. Good thought, Gary. Any other questions, comments, or concerns, council? Again, we got a motion in a second to approve. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 12.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing for findings of fact, providing for authorization and direction to the office of the town attorney to file an action against Department of Homeland Security, Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, hereafter referred to as ICE, seeking a court order allowing contact with and/or deposition or other discovery from present or former ICE officials with reference to ICE's decision to forego plans for a detention facility in the town of Southwest Ranches, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Keith?
Yeah, Mayor, this is actually the identical, well, almost identical resolution that Pembroke Pines adopted. As we all know, that the, what would really end this case quickly on either side is if we had finalization from ICE saying, yes, it was water and sewer. The mayor has spoken with ICE officials on numerous occasions now, and they've told him privately that it was water and sewer. One conversation I was actually present at, another was a private meeting between the mayor and ICE recently, within the last year. But we'd like them to go on record to finally state it was water and sewer, and as a result of that, it would quickly really end this case. Both Pines and us have tried on numerous occasions, because they want to know as well, you know, whether or not we're correct in our statements that it was water and sewer. So Pines has attempted to depose Homeland Security so many times that they got a letter to their attorney, Bruce Johnson, which told him that if he did it again, they'd throw him in jail. We've tried to depose them several times, and in fact, the mayor himself wrote ICE a letter asking them to, two letters, excuse me, asking them to come forward and to allow us to speak to them, and it's been rejected on all the occasions we've tried. So the quick purpose here is to have finality, to try to go to ICE in federal court and say, just give us one person, anyone, that we can either talk to, depose publicly, to tell us once and for all what the issue is. My guess is Pines will intercede whether they go first or we go first. We're both seeking the same thing, which is try to find one ICE official to speak to. So this is not an expensive proposition here. The complaint's drafted, it's either going to get immediately granted by the court or immediately rejected by the court. I've done a lot of legal research on this, and 99.99 get rejected, but it's hopeful that with us going and Pines going, both seeking the same thing, that maybe a court will tell ICE, just give them one person to speak to, and let's try to get this case over.
Thank you, Keith. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Public comment is now over. Again, we got a motion in a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 13, again, the approval of minutes for the regular town council meeting on April 9th, 2015, and April 16th, 2015, the workshop.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any members of the public, because I know you read these and you do the research, we've been corrected before. Seeing none. Public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion in a second to approve. Item number 13, the approval of minutes for the regular council meeting on April 9th, 2015, and the workshop meeting on April 16th, 2015. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And item number 14 is directly related to our meeting as the board of directors and oversight of the volunteer fire department. Andy?
Yeah.
In fact, before that, read the resolution, Russell. I apologize for the record.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a lease purchase agreement with Rosenbauer International for a commercial chassis pumper apparatus to replace existing engine 82 and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, for purpose of the record, we're going to incorporate into this discussion all of the prior testimony, presentation, everything will be reflected in the record as if it has simultaneously been performed at this meeting in order to prevent a reduplication. It's here for you for consideration, with the recommendation of approval from your board.
Make a motion to approve.
Counsel?
I'll second. One question, though, can I add to it? As far as the recalls or issues that was brought up regarding this equipment, can we have that looked into along with this?
Yeah.
Want me to call him up and ask him?
Sure.
Sir, could we bother you again? What are the other residents that come up and mentioned some things related to this equipment, related to it being expired, not up to emissions, just having issues and recalls? What can you tell us about that or let us?
You mentioned a class action lawsuit.
That I'm not aware of.
Okay.
The only thing I can really say is, if there were major problems, Rosenbauer would not be using international chassis. And we built probably in the neighborhood of 300 trucks last year on international chassis. So he mentioned the EPA number, which is 10, and to be honest with you, I have no idea what that means. It's a designation that the federal government puts on this, and it's, it's either acceptable or we wouldn't be able to use that.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, we have a motion in a second to approve. We'll bring it back to you all, obviously, for any additional questions, comments, or concerns. Again, we'll open it up to the public. Mr. Lasky?
Everything he was referring to was put in writing to you. You have it in the official record, and at least three or four times, I copied several people in this room about specifically what I was talking about. I cited the case. It's in your records. Now, I want to know why I was never provided this information and all the time I've been asking for. We talked about some kind of protocol for records. I'm not trying to bury anybody, I'm simply trying to save you some headaches, okay? You had a nice discussion about justifying it based on maintenance costs. Well, the maintenance cost on that emission system is your problem, not the tires, not the engine block, okay? It's the emissions. It scares mechanics. It's a complex system. It's not as simple as it sounds. You know, these emissions have to either burn off in the system or they become a hindrance in the system. So you're not going to find a lot of people that could, where they're not even qualified to work on that engine, it's a fire truck. So you've got to take it to Caterpillar, you've got to take it to Cummins, or you've got to take it to somebody like that, it's a dealer for that engine. But I can't believe he's got the gall to say what he just said. You can look up the records. All you've got to do is ask a dealer like the Kelly Tractor Truck Shop in Miami that handled Dade County, why wouldn't they share the information with you? You know, you don't have to tell me, but just at least ask. There was a lot of fighting going on over that. So anyway, that's my.
Thank you, Jim.